The Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. 在此 United States of America, and two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have any minutes?
We have one set of minutes. I will make a motion that we approve the minutes at equal first as.
Is that as amended?
Yes.
Yeah, it was in the I put it back to the.
Oh.
Yes, I got the new copy.
My second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, tonight we have a few appointments before the board. We've got a public hearing, uh, citizens' concerns, and you said the second public hearing is canceled?
No, um.
The first one?
No, there was a.
Two public hearings that are posted are being held. There was a third, so.
Oh, I see.
I just wanted to point out that the residents who are here for their concerns are in between two public hearings, and the reason is because we canceled the third.
Got it.
You know, it's just the way it worked out.
Let's take care of a couple of the easy ones. Um, five A, appoint a veteran service agent. Um, can I get a motion?
Sure, I will make the motion that we reappoint our serving veteran service agent, Charlie Allah, uh, for a term of three years beginning May first, twenty twenty four, and extending through April thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
My second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about, uh, how about five B? Point animal control officer and assistant animal control officers.
Okay, I will make a motion that we reappoint Janet Fenton as animal control officer. I'm trying to find the note.
Uh, page forty-five?
Well, for forty-five, I don't have the other name. Oh, there we go. Sarah Burns, Jessica Labonte, and Janet Lipscomb all as assistant animal control officers. Um, is there a term for that yet, starting May first, twenty twenty four, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty five?
My second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Let's get one more in there. Request for approval of proclamation for National Volunteer Week recognition.
Uh, Mr. Kamo is with us. If you want to recognize him or do you want me just to read this?
How about, just read that.
Uh, week of April twenty-first to twenty-seventh is National Volunteer Week, and the Communications Committee had the idea that this might be an opportunity to recognize volunteers and support that support the town. Towards that end, they are offering several activities, or offering the possibility of several activities, submitting an article to the Sentinel, um, creating a webpage that lists volunteer opportunities within town government, uh, drafting a proclamation, and, uh, asking a member of the Communications Committee to post that proclamation. Have that proclamation if you, if you want it read.
Yes, please.
I have a question before we continue. Did Ed want us to wait until seven oh five for us to talk about this?
He's here.
He's here.
Oh, where is he?
He's not here.
Okay, hi. Did you want to talk about this?
No.
Okay.
I'm just here to watch.
The proclamation reads, whereas the week of April twenty-first to twenty-seventh, twenty twenty four, is National Volunteer Week across the country, whereas an untold number of volunteers provide thousands of hours supporting the functions of town committees, commissions, and departments, whereas many of the functions of the town are only possible because of residents volunteering their time, whereas these volunteer efforts contribute in untold ways to make in Belchertown a vibrant place to live, raise families, and do business. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty four, we, the Belchertown Select Board, recognize the week of April twenty-first to twenty-seventh, twenty twenty four, as Volunteer Week in Belchertown, and thank all the volunteers for their time and commitment to enhancing the community of Belchertown.
Wonderful message.
I happily second.
Terrific idea.
Happily second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, for anybody in the room, this town runs on volunteers, much like most towns, and there's no question that, uh, a week of recognition doesn't do enough. Let's give them a week of pay as well.
Yeah, hey, I wish we made some health records.
Uh, but the motion was to approve the proclamation.
I seconded.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Uh, our first appointment, uh, the public hearing, the town public road Meadow Pond Road. We want to open the public hearing. Thank you.
I will make the motion that we open the public hearing. Then, uh, do you want me to read this? Uh, do you need to second on that motion or just read it?
Just read it, actually.
In accordance with the, excuse me, with the provisions of general laws, chapter eighty-two, sections twenty-one through twenty-three, the Select Board of the Town of Belchertown intend to lay out as a townway a certain street in Belchertown, Massachusetts, identified as Meadow Pond Road, all prepared for the inhabitants of the Town of Belchertown, a street acceptance plan and as-built conditions plan, Meadow Pond Road and a portion of Jason's Way, dated December twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, by Sherman Frederick Land, Surveying and Engineering, a Division of Hancock Survey Associates, Inc., and recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds, Plan Two Fifty-Five, page ninety-six, uh, perens, one through four, closed prints. This plan is available for the, for inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk, Lawrence Memorial Hall, Belchertown, Massachusetts. You are invited to attend the public hearing to be held at the Select Board, in the Select Board's meeting room on the first floor of Lawrence Memorial Hall, through Davis Street, Belchertown, on Tuesday, May, excuse me, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty-three P M. The Select Board will determine the boundaries and measurements of the ways, file the same in the Office of the Town Clerk, and submit the resulting layouts for acceptance at the next town meeting, scheduled for Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Public hearing is now called. Steve, do you want, uh, or is, do you want to give a brief synopsis of what this is about?
Yeah, um, I, I can be very brief. So this, this is the final step, um, before the, um, question goes to town meeting. Um, the Board of Selectmen will solicit input from, um, any interested residents, um, and take that under consideration, and if not, um, close the hearing and vote to, um, approve the form that's on page eight, which is the order of layout. And that order is what sends it to town meeting floor, um, for approval. Once it's approved at town meeting, there's a whole another series of steps with the acceptance of easements and, um, rights of way. Um, so we'll be working through that, um, hopefully. Um, this subdivision's been around for, um, the better part of twenty years. Um, so I'm glad that we're finally at the point where we're gonna wrap it up and, um, make it become a public way. And the reason we do that is because, um, once it's a public way, the Department of Public Works can begin, um, full maintenance of the subdivision, and also receive, um, money from the state for the maintenance. It goes into our Chapter Ninety mileage.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, this is public.
The DPW Director is here.
Oh, there she is.
Hi.
Hi, um, we've, we've worked with Dave Leffler, the developer here tonight, too, um, um, within the recent months to make sure that the, um, road is built and constructed as designed and approved, um, the stormer system is functioning properly. Um, so, um, we are, you know, we're behind, um, this moving ahead to town meeting. Um, here tonight, we have any questions if you are looking for how the process went through. Thank you.
Very good. It seems as if this is a public comment. Is there anybody from the pub, public that would like to make any comments about this?
Yes.
We know, we know who you are, but would you please introduce yourself?
Lynn Raymer, thirty-six, Jason's Way.
Thank you.
Um, so I have just a couple of questions. Um, one, is the rest of Jason's Way, since I think the piece of Jason's Way, I don't know if it's just my house or the next house also, is the rest of Jason's Way already considered a town road?
Linda?
No, the, so the lower portion, um, is under another development, and, um, we're working with that developer, but that is not going to town meeting this year, hopeful for next year's acceptance.
Okay, so on that does the fact that literally right beyond my road, does that matter? If one is considered a townway and one is not, in terms of maintenance and all of those things?
It does not.
Okay.
It'll be treated the same as it has been.
Okay, another question.
The lower part of your street is included in a separate subdivision will.
I know, it's like literally right after my road or my house.
Cut right there.
Yep. Um, and then, isn't the town already, is the town already providing for snow plowing on our road?
That is correct.
So nothing changes with respect to that? So is it just the sidewalks, the street, the water, those kinds of things that are really the, the topic of it becoming a public way?
That is correct.
So speed monitoring by the police, I mean, that's always been done anyway, right?
Right.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand the differences between what we've had versus what we are going to be?
Yeah, um, it, past practice has been that the town provided snow removal on subdivisions once they were occupied. Um, we no longer do that, so we're, what we're attempting to do is clean up some of these older subdivisions. The newer ones that are being put on the books, the developer's responsible for snow removal. We're not gonna change our policy, um, to, on the other half of your street. It's, it's gonna continue to be plowed.
Okay, and then, um, I think the last question I have is, the properties that are still not sold are still the requirement of that, of Leffler, in this case of the ownership, to maintain those properties specifically related to the fencing that's around the retention pond and things like that?
Once it's accepted, it'll become the town's responsibility to maintain.
To maintain that retention pond?
The retention basins, yep. Yep.
Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. Would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Kathy Bodley, seventy-one Meadow Pond Road. I'm at the cul-de-sac at the end there, where there, um, a road was built between our property and the other property. And, um, I'm just wondering if Dave's gonna have an opportunity to fix that, um, our lawn and that entire area before it gets handed over to the town? And the other thing I have a question about is, um, the roads, yeah, go ahead.
Can we just, uh, Lynn, do you have any thoughts on that topic?
I do not.
Steve?
I haven't, I haven't heard about this part.
Is, is that the access road that the planning board, that was on the plans? Yep. That's, that's a permanent roadway for access to maintain the detention basin.
Right, I think our question is, is somebody gonna fix it?
The, the, our property, our lawn was dug up as a result of this. We'd like to see that fixed before it's handed over to the town. I agree.
Is it, uh, gravel?
Um, it's gravel. I'm not suggesting we put grass in there. What I am suggesting is that our lawn is repaired, so.
So the roadway itself is okay, it's the lawn around it?
It's the, yes, it's our road, our lawn has been dug up. Um, so we'd like to have that fixed. And then the other question I have is regarding the condition of the road and sidewalks. Seems like it's been about fifteen years, and the condition of the road has deteriorated. So in essence, you'll be handing over a road that's going to need maintenance in a couple of years.
I think that's the case with any road that gets handed over to the town, right? Uh, I don't think we've ever had a brand-new road handed over to the town that way.
Um, actually, we had one developer.
One?
Build a road, and, uh, he, he actually put a chain across it until he was ready to turn it over to the town.
Oh, wow.
That was, that was the only time in my tenure of thirty years at the DPW.
Right.
But for the most part, the roads be, become active. Um, the timelines, we've been working with the planning board to try to tighten that up so that, um, the roads aren't in use as long as they currently are.
Yep.
Um, and I think going forward, that's gonna be corrected, but, um, you know, it's a very expensive process for a developer, and sometimes these things drag out a little bit depending on the market. And, you know, this subdivision has been through several different swings of the real estate market, and it's been, you know, progress has been slow sometimes and, and more rapid during others. Um, and it's a, it's a pretty large development, so, um, it took, it took a little bit of time, and, and we are aware of that. Um, and the other question was about the lawn damage. Um, but we'll have the DPW Director and the developer, um, look at those areas.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Uh, any other comments? Yes, sir?
It's probably fifteen Meadow Pond. Just concerned on, um, the remaining lots, are they still buildable or do they go to the town or, or, uh, the builder still owns them all?
Correct. Whoever owns them will continue to own them. This is just about the road.
Okay. Do you know if they're still, uh, buildable? I think there's like three of them. Just.
That is way outside my area. I have no idea.
They better be.
I think the, uh, planning board has already released them. If they were not built on, they were probably held in covenant as a guarantee that the project is completed. Um, it allows the town to have a little bit of leverage over the developer, and if the developer defaults, we can sell the lots and put the money into finishing the project. Um, once a project is deemed complete, they typically go back to the developer, and that should have already happened.
Any question?
Follow-up question from Mrs. Raymer.
Lynn Raymer, thirty-six, Jason's Way. So one of those lots is next to me, and I would, by turning this over, releasing those lots, does that now, um, potentially allow the builder to put another road in and create another subdivision? Or would that go through another whole planning board, and that would be another thing where we would be known for, is that correct?
If it's not already, then yeah, it would have to go through the whole process all over again. You can't just put a road where you feel like it. I mean, you do have to contact the planning.
Well, there's, there's a lot of, um, cutting that's happening on that lot, so.
Cutting.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
A lot of cutting of trees.
I see.
Clear, remove, clearing, cutting, yes, that's occurring.
Is that by the owner of the property or by the town?
By the owner of the property. I'm concerned that I'm gonna end up with a corner lot and end up with two streets on a, on a, on the side of my house.
Yeah, that would have to go through a whole other process if they, if they are gonna do that.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments relating to, uh, Meadow Pond Road? Uh, anybody online with any questions or comments relating to Meadow Pond Road?
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Time for board deliberation. Uh, any questions from the board? Questions or comments from the board?
I have one. I'm not sure if Linda can answer this or not. This, each time that we do this and the road becomes a public way, it adds to the mileage in the town for which we receive state funding, right, for a road name. So I wonder, can you say, is it how long, how many miles, or is this an appreciable number of miles, this particular?
This particular one, mm, I mean, we're probably talking mile and a, two miles.
Okay. Ours is curious.
But.
Maybe.
Rodney, Rodney, do we?
It accumulates, um, and we've been providing services. We've been plowing it technically, uh, not under Chapter Ninety, so this is just the final step where we can.
We can add to it.
Get credit for, yeah, get credit for those miles.
Thank you.
Very good.
Well, I'll make a motion, if we're ready, um, to accept, uh, Meadow Pond Road and a portion of Jason's Way as a townway, hereby lay, laying out Meadow Pond Road and a portion of Jason's Way as a public way, as all shown on the plan referenced.
We have to, town meeting has to approve this, right? Do we approve it as well?
Right, we're just approving the warrant article essentially.
I see.
Um, page eight. You need to endorse the document on page eight. That's what you're voting to do tonight, just the layout.
So then I would say.
I just said as.
Right.
I will second that.
I was answering, Peggy.
Second?
I did.
I think, uh, my only concern here, Steve, is that if there is damage, the, um, you know, it should be fixed, right? So my question is like, does this have to be done tonight? Uh, do you want it done tonight, or?
Yeah, we should get this done tonight. The bottom line is if the lawn damage isn't fixed, we can, we can inform the residents at town meeting to vote no. That's, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, I, I assumed that you were gonna take care of that.
I don't think the developer wants that to happen. I think if it's just some lawman seed. We need to maintain a road into the back to maintain a detention basin, so if, if the road is in the proper place, and it's just the, the lawn damage to the sides of it, then I'm sure it'll be fixed. If not, then I will get up and say, take no action.
Sounds good. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero, zero. You know, uh.
You good with that?
Yeah. No, that's, that's at seven oh three. That one can be late. Um, I think, I think we're gonna, even though it's gonna take a little bit longer, we apologize about being late to the, um, to our residents and neighbors of Mountain View. The, um, we're gonna take as much time. I don't want to have to worry about stopping at seven oh three, right? Um, uh, the board and the town, uh, are very aware of what has happened, um, in that neighborhood, right? Uh, we've been in touch with, um, town council and, uh, a variety of, uh, other entities, uh, about this situation. So I think before we get started with that, though, the, um, uh, town council did ask me to read a statement, and then we'll open up to some, um, comments, uh, by, by some of the people that are here. So if you wouldn't mind, just bear with me. Uh, let's see here. Uh, as it relates to the Mountain View, um, incident, uh, we are working with state and local police who are investigating the matter, uh, presently, and we're investigating as soon as notified, um, a couple of weeks ago. We are aware of the recent statements made by the Chair of the Granby Board of Health, and we want to make, uh, crystal clear that he did not accurately represent, uh, this board's position or the town's position in this matter. We have been and always will be willing to work with our neighbors in all areas of mutual interest, especially those that affect the safety, uh, of, of people. At this time, however, we believe that it is in the community's best interest to let the police investigation reach a conclusion before initiating any formal action against the club. Once that occurs, we intend to work cooperatively with our counterparts in Granby, uh, to attempt to reach a solution that is in the best interests of everybody impacted. Um, and then it goes without saying that, uh, we understand this is a stressful situation for everybody. Um, and with that, I'd like to open it up. I, I know there's several people here that would like to make some comments, so who, who would like to go first?
First question, on, onto what you just said, okay?
Actually, would you mind, would you mind introducing yourself?
My name is Andrew Rattlin. My wife, Christine, one-twenty Mountain View Drive. Our house is the one that the first round was recovered from. I have been outside doing my lawn on many, on several occasions when the range is in operation, and on those occasions had rounds come past me, but just not able to find where they are. It is extremely disturbing to hear that you want to await the outcome of a police investigation. I'm a retired officer from New York. I know exactly what the investigation can and cannot do. You will end up with the same exact result on this second and third investigation as you did on the one on my house because of the way it's being handled by the people at the range and how it, and what has gone on. At that point, that, that is just a fact that I know, without, beyond the shadow of a doubt. Okay? That's all I'll say on what you just said. At rest of your here.
Chris Brown, one-nineteen Mountain View. I want to make a comment that although that statement sounds great, and it's like a press release, um, this statement does not call into question the actual physical risk that the individuals on Mountain View have. That's a totally unacceptable statement when bullets are going into people's houses, and bullets are whizzing by people as they're mowing their lawn. And quite frankly, it was kind of a little insensitive of town council. Um, I, I, my, my opinion is that this is a serious thing, and until it's investigated, the range should be shut down.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Christine. It's Andrew Rattlin. I live with my husband Andrew. We live at one-twenty Mountain View Drive. Actually, I have a very quick prepared statement.
Of course.
To actually answer that statement you just read. Uh, so on June twenty-seventh of last year, a bullet shattered the storm door of our home located at one-twenty Mountain View Drive. The incident was immediately reported to the police by our neighbors, who had heard the round pass them while they were outside their home. A high-powered rifle round was recovered between the glass storm door and the inside door of our home. This is the main entryway in and out of our home. Unfortunately, the police investigation led to an inconclusive result, and the matter was dropped. On March twenty-ninth of this year, at one-forty-seven Mountain View Drive, a bullet struck and shattered our neighbor's glass sliding doors. A week later, on April seventh of this year, at one-forty-three Mount Drive, two more bullets were recovered from the shed of yet another neighbor's home. These rounds were discovered to have penetrated the shed on the property which is proximal to their home. Our neighborhood is directly downrange from the long-distance ranges, which are seven hundred and a thousand yards, of the Granby Bow and Gun Club. These incidences have all occurred on the dates and times when the range is in operation. Just to make sure I'm illustrating my point, this is, these are the high-powered rifles that are at the gun club.
This is a picture from the gun club.
Right.
You want me to bring it up here? I didn't bring my glasses tonight.
That's why I had it made so big. And the backstop is our neighborhood.
Thanks, so if you.
This is facing, if you look at the, the trees, we are what is behind and above those trees.
Directly behind.
You got it, and I will show that.
No, we have a second picture, too.
Yeah, I have, I have another one that I'll give it to you even better.
What you have to keep in mind is that these guns have a three-thousand-meter range. Our neighborhood is within seventeen hundred meters.
This is a, this is a picture from Google that you can get at any time you like and pull up just the same way we did, that shows how it is laid out.
It doesn't show it to me, so will you please explain who is where if you're on this picture?
Sure will.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out the, my upside ground.
This is the gun club.
Oh, that's where.
Okay, this is our homes.
Seventeen hundred meters.
Okay, it's approximately seventeen hundred meters to my door. Okay, this was done on the first time.
I know, I saw, I saw this in the, but I could not make.
Right, no, but that's why I'm saying.
Thank you.
And the seven hundred and thousand yard ranges face our development. And the thing that everybody here should be aware of, we just happen to be the ones that got hit, but every single home in our development, including the two streets behind us and next to us, are in range of these guns, as are when they use the more high-powered ones, the schools. The Belchertown schools are within the range that these guns can reach. Could you turn around and show it to the camera, please? And just hold it there a little bit?
Do you need the other one, too?
Thank you.
Um, your wife said, you actually said something, you're, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I don't know your first name.
Christine.
Christine, thank you. While your husband was talking, you said something that I didn't get, uh, I, something about the range that.
So, so the range that these, um, guns have, these weapons have is three thousand meters. Our homes are within seventeen hundred meters, so perfectly within the range to be struck with a bullet.
No, in other words, the guns, the rounds can travel three thousand.
I, I, I hear that. And what is legally, what, uh, what are they legally allowed in the gun club? What's, what's the.
The bullets shouldn't leave the premise of the gun club to come into any other area on the outside.
Is that a written law, some?
That's, yeah.
It's a trespass law.
Excuse me?
Trespass.
Trespass.
If a bullet leaves your property and enters another property, it's trespass.
My question simply is, is there a legal limit that, within the gun range, that it should not be going any further out?
It shouldn't go off their range. It shouldn't go off the seven hundred or the thousand-yard range.
If you're asking if there's a Massachusetts law, no. There's only one Massachusetts law that exists, and that, that gives people the right at the gun club to violate noise ordinance.
Okay.
If you're asking about, is there a Massachusetts law about how far can a gun shoot on someone's property?
No, 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 no.
There's no law about that. So the only people that can protect us are you.
Okay. So if I could just finish. Um, we're present this evening not to only bring awareness of the safety issue, but to request our town's governing leadership take emphatic steps to protect our community, ensuring that the, ensuring the implementation of common sense safety standards and practices at this gun club. Let me make this really clear, that the bullet that struck our home did not just shatter the glass. It shattered ours and our children's sense of safety in our home. So though that prepared statement was lovely, it does not address the unbelievable sense of safety that has been lost in our neighborhood. Had the door been opened that day, it could have easily struck either one of our children, as that is a main room within our house. The incident has caused an acute stress reaction for our kids and has had implications for their mental health. My family and the families of, that reside in our community now live in fear and have become hyper vigilant in our efforts to protect ourselves. Children are restricted from playing in their yards. Families cannot use the outside areas of their home or gathering rooms inside their homes with windows facing that range during the times the gun club is in operation for fear of being struck by a bullet. Our families, along with the many people who walk their dogs and jog and walk their children and the school buses that drive through our community, must be kept safe. It's not a question of if, but when, until a human is struck and injured. And if that happens, it will be the responsibility of the gun club and the towns of Belchertown and Granby if emphatic steps are not taken to keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Uh, am I allowed to give you something?
And just introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Jay Colsberg. Uh, I'm a Belchertown resident. Um, good evening. So last week, my neighbors and I, many of the people here, we got together because we're concerned about bulleting our homes. And the following requests were what we came up with together. So this is not my single idea. This is the idea of a lot of people. Our first request is that the Belchertown Select Board work with the town of Granby immediately to halt the use of the long ranges at the Granby Bow and Gun Club, pending a safety audit, carried out by a ballistics expert selected by both towns. We do not want the range policing itself. We want you to help with that. This has happened in other communities. Situate and North Attleboro have dealt with this. There's a roadmap for it for you to follow. They successfully dealt with this situation in Massachusetts. Our suggestion would be that the safety audit include a look at, how does the gun club operate? How is it? How is it supervised? What are the procedures that they have in place to keep us safe? But most importantly, someone needs to look at the design of the gun club. There's something called surface danger zone. It's a cone from where you fire your firearm. It's like a pie. If you look at the first page of what I just gave you, you'll see where the gun range is at the bottom of the triangle. You'll see that 1,700 meters out is where our homes are, incident one, two, and three. You'll see 3,000 meters farther than that is a yellow line. If you look in the cone, those are all of people's homes that can be hit by guns.
From the range.
From the range. And that's the minimum rifle that they could be firing there. That is not a maximum rifle. If they were shooting large caliber weapons, that is even farther. Our second request was that the Belcher Town Select Board urge the Granby Bow and Gun Club to voluntarily adopt common sense operating procedures. And if they refuse to demand that the town of Granby implement those proactive safety measures. We've provided them on pages four and five of that packet that you have. But some of those things include, there should be a range safety officer on the premises when people are shooting guns, to make sure what they're doing is safe. There should be video surveillance being recorded when people are at the range shooting their weapons, so that if someone does something unsafe, they can help the police investigate it quickly, as opposed to it taking three months. And there should be an annual inspection every year to make sure that if a berm is too short or if something has shifted geographically, that they can fix it. Our third and last request is that the Belcher Town Select Board require the chief of police to expedite the investigation and receive regular status updates so that we can make sure that this is done quickly. Because it took three months the first time, and we are getting hit with bullets in the back of our houses.
And we're going into gun season for them to open the range. And on the weekend that the rounds just came through, they were running a beginner's sniper course.
So if there's anything in this packet that doesn't make sense, we built it together and I can explain it to you. Where the data came from, where the distances came from, where the chart from the United States Marines and Army came from to figure out what is the surface danger zone, that's all in here so that you can understand where these numbers came from. But we need to push very hard immediately to get a ballistics expert down there to say, is it safe or not? We can't wait for the police to finish another three-month investigation. So we thank you for your time, and we hope to hear how you plan to keep us safe sooner than later.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Steve Nelson from 147 Mountain View. Mine was the second house that was hit. We had just installed a brand-new sliding glass door. Our insurance will cover that. Prior to the bullet hitting the glass door of my wife and the owner of the company that was painting our house, Bruno, were standing right in front of that door. It had to be within, within hours of that bullet striking the glass door. Now, it went through this, 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 you know, double-pane door and got lodged inside. That bullet could easily have entered up in my wife's kidneys, in Bruno's liver, you know. Jake's kids, you know, they can't play out back on the swing that he set up for them because it's in the firing range. They have to play in front of the house, so the house is protecting the children from the possibility of stray bullets coming into the, into his yard. I mean, his, that, that first bullet that went and hit Andy's house had to go right between Jake's house and Jacob's house. So those two guys right there, in fact, Jacob and Molly were outside, and they were talking to a contractor at the time, and they heard the bullet go past them. I don't have children in my house anymore, but I know Jake, Jake had, you know, well, he's been through a lot, you know. He, he, his, his, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Klingvall, 17 Overlook, so I'm in what we can call the cone of concern right now as well. I think the one thing that was not stated that the pictures may not be able to show is their house was hit as it came through up the hill, through the backyards of people, crossed the street that people walked down every single day to hit the house across the street. So it is, like, this is really, really quite alarming. And to hear that the council only recognized, I think they said one investigation or one incident, it's multiple incidents, and we need someone taking care of this as quickly as possible. Not three months later after another investigation. It's just going to keep rolling or, you know, kicking the can down the hill, basically. It needs immediate attention.
I would just like to clarify one, I would just like to clarify one point she just made. Aware of the incident, yes, I, I did say that. We're aware of everything. Matter of fact, Mr. Holsberg's email specifically, right, and a few other people. Ms. Ajack sent an email, and I'm aware of a, I'm aware of a bunch of others, right? So it's not the case where you typically write to the government and it gets lost in the circular file. It's not like the, I can tell you that this board is very aware of, of everything that you guys have put together.
And we care very much.
And I would say that you have done an excellent job articulating everything, right? I think, you know, this is probably, I know this would be unpopular to say, but there's, there's not much we can say here tonight. There's just not, right? I know nobody wants to hear that, but that is in fact the case.
If I can just add something that I, okay? Being a retired officer from New York, having been involved in this stuff many times and having been at many, many ranges, the fact that the gun club lawyered up immediately both on my incident and as soon as his incident happened the same day, causing the DA last night to take three months on the investigation, having to put out subpoenas and get warrants in order to be able to get information from them to start off with. And now I, I understand that a letter came to you from the board that they have, or the president of the gun club.
Is that in the mail packet, Steve? Is that probably in your package?
Yeah, the, the letter went to the board of health.
Yeah.
But it was in your packet.
Yeah.
And, I mean, on a personal note, that's total bunk. Because, you know, they, they have called, they have temporarily closed till the 28th of, of April the use of the 700 and 1,000-yard ranges to reevaluate their safety procedures. It's basically to cover their asses and make the changes that they want to make. Because if you take a look in our packet, I don't know, Jake, is it in the packet that thing that came off of Facebook with the conversation?
Sorry about the beer thing?
What's that?
Sorry about that.
Beer on the spear now?
Page four, page nine is all the sniper stuff, but no.
Yeah, there, there's stuff online having to do with that range, of people having been at that range for different things that went on, different events. And one of the main comments by somebody was that there's more beer than shooters. Two things you don't mix, alcohol and guns. And the fact that the gun club is doing that. I'm not trying to close a gun club. I shoot. I carry, okay? I'm not, that's not who I am, all right? But they don't have the right to put us as a neighborhood in the town next door, okay? In harm's way, because they want to do what they want.
So I just may say one thing. Chris Brown again from 119 Mountain View. So it's foreseeable now to both the town of Randy and the town of Belcher Town and the gun club that these bullets are going up the hill and going into neighbors' houses, okay? And I know that you guys are not taking a lot of concern, but I will tell you under chapter 258, I'm a lawyer. That's the municipal liability statute, that you will be, if this continues and somebody gets struck, you will be the subject of a lawsuit, because quite frankly, you have notice, okay? Constructive notice. It's happened four times already, okay? Well, it happened more than four times, but it's only four times we were able to recover something to prove it, okay? I can tell you the number of times I've been on my lawn when they've been shooting on that range and I've heard the rounds come past me. And it is, it is not, does not make me feel comfortable to have to then suddenly go and go into my house to tell everybody to stay away from the front and go, go and stay in the back. Shouldn't be. So what I'm telling you, you know, as someone who did insurance defense for 25 years, you have a lawsuit waiting to happen. And, and, and I say, and I say that, you know, when you read the lawyer's thing, I was like, that's not really a great statement, because quite frankly, you have notice, yet foreseeability, which makes for a reasonable person, which is the standard, a duty of care. And so far, I don't see the range, you know, Belcher Town or Granby exercising reasonable care. So this is, quite frankly, a very.
So are you suggesting that this board doesn't care?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I'm suggesting that it's, it's not going to matter when you're in Hampshire Superior Court and you're in front of one of the judges. It's not going to matter that you were covering your steps in one, two, three. It's going to be somebody died and everybody knew that there was this risk out there, okay? And so where we are right now, and I'm not saying you don't care, but what I'm saying is the longer this goes on, the greater the risk is for you. And the greater the risk is for Randy, and the greater the risk is for, for the gun club, because.
I'm actually more concerned about the risk to the residents here in the room. That's my number one.
I understand that, but what I'm pointing out is you have, if something happens to one of the residents, you have a wrongful death suit on your hands.
I'm not willing to have that on my hands, regardless of what the council says. I'm not willing, and I'm hearing, I'm hearing everybody. And really, the next step is what's next? I'm, I'm looking at you, Steve. I'm, I'm looking to you. Because these concerns are valid.
Mr. Holsberg, Jeff, you're after that.
So I, I believe that you guys care. And I, I think that if the gun club got a call from, from the select board, maybe that has more weight than the calls that we make when we just get full voicemails and emails that don't get responded to. If you can get them to agree to a ballistics expert going into that place and, and looking at whether or not it's safe, that saves us a whole lot of time. And I have the optimism that they want to do the right thing, that they want to make sure that what they're doing there is safe. Let's give them the benefit of the doubt, but if they don't cooperate with you, we need to go to the next step. We need to know what that next step is right away. And so the thing that you guys could do tonight is make those calls. And if they don't cooperate tomorrow, to, to up the ante and call the board of health and say, we're willing to hire someone to get down there with you. We need you to partner with us, because this is dangerous. And we have to figure out a way to get the gun club to open its door, to get the ballistics expert that we choose down there as fast as possible, because we don't want a kid to get shot in his backyard. That's, that's what I think you could do tonight and tomorrow.
And not let them open until that happens.
Mr. Ajack.
Jeff Sajak, 143 Mountain View, bullet three and four that hit our house. So just a couple of things just to point out. So again, just to stress, we're not looking to shut them down. If that ends up being a result, it ends up being a result. This is all about safety, purely about safety, right? So they, they need to assure us that there's no way a bullet can come from their club and to outside of their property, our house, anyone's house, whether accidental or on purpose. They, they need to assure the public, and I think they have a right to assure the public, that that can't happen. And I think that's all we're looking for. If they came back and said, and we had that independent review, and someone said, nope, this, you know, this was put in, this was put in, that cannot happen, then that certainly would be kind of the outcome I'm looking for. The other piece I just wanted to point out, another factual piece here, is that although this, these long ranges were put in place, I think it was 2016, it was shut down because of some of the lawsuits or whatever was happening with Granby and that club back then. It wasn't operational till 2022. So I know when we got together, we got together at our, at our house recently, some of the folks that have been here for a lot, we've only been there for four or five years. Some of the folks that have been there, the question came up, it was a great question, what changed? Because for the longest time, people have lived up there and did not have this issue. There was the noise issue, but, you know, again, I think all of us accepted the noise. No one's here complaining about noise. I want to make sure that's a fact here too. No one's complaining about noise. No one's complaining about gun rights or anything. It's all about our safety. And the folks that have lived up there for the longest time, when they ask that question, what changed? What changed was those long ranges became operational 2022. So less than two years, four bullets already found, right? So then that's factual. The two bullets that hit my house or hit my shed, which is between, by the way, the woods, my shed, and then my house. So that shed wasn't there, went and hit my house too. And the bullets that were recovered there were recovered from the police. I saw the holes. I called Sergeant Mann. Sergeant Mann and, and one of the other officers showed up. They brought in the state police forensic, forensic person. And we were there together, and they were digging through the holes through my shed, and sure enough, whoop, drops the bullets. So they, they were the ones that actually recovered the bullets too. So again, just want to stress, you know, 2022, it's been operational for less than two years and already four bullets. That's what's changed. And then lastly, again, our ask here is all about safety, pure, pure safety. That's all we want to have when all is said and done.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments tonight?
To, I don't know if there's anyone here from Granby, Granby.
Oh, sure.
Is there anyone here from, from the club, from, is it Granby Bow and Gun or?
Granby Bow and Gun Club.
Is there anyone here from the club? See, were they, do they know it was on our agenda tonight?
I don't know if they did or not.
We also don't have our representatives here, but I thought we're gonna, I thought we're gonna have them listening in.
They were, they were supposed to be here, and this morning they sent a notice saying that their, their schedule's a chance, so they couldn't make it tonight. So I, I emailed them.
And I thought you actually put out the invitation to Granby, Steve.
Invitations were sent out to our representatives, and that was it.
But not to the Granby Club or the, uh, club itself?
Well, to be fair, Manager Williams and myself, we met with the town administrator previously, who went through their entire history of how they've dealt with the Granby Bow and Gun Club. We're aware, we're aware.
Were you satisfied with what they had to say? Do we know that they're being regulated in some way? I went on their website, and it looks to me as, I mean, kind of, I don't know what upper range and lower range mean. So I don't know if it's only the upper range or the lower range that, that you all are talking about, that, you know, that puts your houses at risk and your kids at risk. But, but they're open from 8:00 AM to sunset, basically. Sometimes it's just the upper range and sometimes it's just the lower range. But they are open from 8:00 AM to sunset. So it sounded to me as though you all might be at risk all of those hours of the day. But I'm not sure, because I don't know which range and which, what that means.
Also, note that there's nobody there. No one is there to supervise at this range. There is no employee who is there regularly.
I checked, there's nothing, it says nothing about that, so I checked up the issue log, isn't it?
They have license plate scanners, so they know who came in and out of the lot. Then you got a key fob to go in and use the bathroom. There have been stories of people that have told, this is just an ad hoc, well, I don't know if this is true, but people who will put, you know, let's put targets up in the trees to make it more exciting, which would then put those guns aimed at our houses if they missed those targets. The best-case scenario that I can think of is somebody who's unfamiliar with a sniper rifle and how sensitive the trigger is, is bringing their gun down when they hit the trigger button mistake and the bullet flew out of that gun and landed in my house. That's the best-case scenario, a to, total accident. Worst-case scenario is somebody decided that they're upset because the gun range was shut down from the, from 2016 to 2022 under their lawsuits. And they think that maybe somebody up on the hill had something to do with it, and they're going to send some bullets up our way just to shake us up. That would be the worst-case scenario. I'm hoping somewhere between.
Hi, Susan. Hi, Nicole Sodan, 117 Overlook Drive. I just want to voice that the point of a gun range is to learn gun safety. And the reality is, is the design of that gun range should accommodate for all things. That is not, the group consensus is that this was something intentional. But if it is not designed in a proper manner, then this will keep happening. It is, the point of a gun range is that if you have a bad shot, that the backstop prevents it from exiting not only their facility, their town. Their bullets should not leave their town. And so a lot of the flaw in this is the design. So that is what we are begging you to push, to evaluate that, so that my three children, all the children of the neighborhood, grandchildren, imagine that. If you have grandchildren and they are walking around on the street, that they are safe. It's the design of the facility that we are deeply concerned with.
I want to, I just want to say, Steve, that if this were my neighborhood. I wanna, I just wanna say, Steve, that if this were my neighborhood, I would be equally outraged and frightened. And I don't know what we can do. I understand that they're, they're not, they're private. Even the select board in Granby feels that they can't do anything. Something should be done. And a minimum, maybe our representatives can help in some way, but-
With all due respect, this is your neighborhood.
I'm sorry.
I mean, this is your neighborhood. This is your town.
You know what I'm saying. I understand that you're upset. You understand what I'm saying.
I know. If a bullet comes through your window, you're gonna have a totally different perspective.
And with all that you said, I'd like to finish my statement. And then I understand what you're saying, I do. But there's no progress in interrupting one another. I'm, I want to know what can be done. I'd like some action on this, and I'd like to hear about it. And, and I, I do share your concerns. I, I absolutely do. I'm sorry that you feel like you can just miss my statement, but I, I understand how you all are feeling, and I find it horrifying. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Representative Saunders and Senator Olivera have been contacted by many of us and asked for legislation. That's years away.
It is. And legislation would be after the fact.
So we really need something now.
It's not enough.
That's what we wanna make sure. We need something now. And I think there are things that we wait out that this board can do just by itself. We don't necessarily need those people to do anything. They should, but we can get, we can ask for that, that gun club to let a ballistics expert in there right now. And if they say no, that's something for their building inspector to seriously consider, whether or not they should maintain an operating permit. Because how can you operate correctly if you don't even be inspected for safety? There's a lot of ways into this that I'm sure a smarter person than me could figure out, if there's an interest in helping us at this level.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say thank you, because you're giving us the time. I know it's not in your power a hundred percent, but the one place I know has the power right now to do something immediately is the Board of Health, because it's public safety, just like it would be with a disease. It's the same thing. They have rights, and they can do something immediately to help put this in a hold pattern, and then have it looked at and evaluated. That's, and that's what needs to be done.
I will say that I'm uncomfortable, given the initial statement, that I can't express what I wanna express, and I don't have the story behind why that's the case. It's like, just trust me. And I'm offended by that. I don't, but, but I just want that on record. I'll, I'll go with what was said, but I'm not happy about it. And it, it doesn't make anyone here happy.
I agree. I feel the same way. Unfortunately, I'm part of the investigation. I've been briefed on things that I can't discuss, and I've been advised that I should not participate in this conversation, that this is a listening session for me. But what I can tell you is that I spend time every day in contact with one entity or another, whether it's the police chief, our legislators, the town of Granby, town council. It's nonstop, and we are doing everything we can to expedite the investigation and look for any other avenue that we can. So I will brief the board more fully if you want. I can schedule a time to do that in executive session. But right now, I, I cannot speak on the details of the investigation. I did hear that there may be some other resources that we can pursue, and I can look into those this week. I'll certainly do that.
I'd appreciate it. If there was some way that we could help, you would let us know. And that's all I'm asking, that if there's some step that we can take that doesn't violate the requirements of confidentiality or not, that I would like to know what they are.
The best thing we can do, specifically tonight and going forward, is just keep this on the town manager and the chief of police's top of radar. So when they see this, we'll ask them.
Can we schedule an update?
Well, these things don't, you want an update when there is no update?
No, I want an update when there's an update.
Right.
When there's something to be, to be done.
When there's something to be said.
But I think we need to kinda push for it to happen sooner rather than later. It's not, it's not okay to have to hide in your house. It's not okay to have children at risk.
And I don't disagree with that. I feel the same way.
8:00 AM to the sunset at a minimum. And, and, and the letter I sent from whoever wrote to our Board of Health, in my opinion, was disingenuous. It's like, we decided it's not our fault.
Yeah.
Could we get some data work done?
It couldn't come from us, is what they keep saying, which I find totally amazing, considering I have shot in many, many a range, and been, and partaken in advanced training at facilities. And I can tell you that one of the ranges I was a member of is in East Hampton, Long Island. And the house right outside the range, okay, is worth two and a half million dollars on the beach, 'cause the range is on the beach, okay? And not a damn round from that range could ever get to any, any place off the range.
Because of how it's designed.
Okay, because of how the range was designed and built, and it's owned by a retired FBI, DEA, and New York City police captain.
They're responsible.
Okay? Well, and you, if anything like this had happened, they would've closed and done an investigation to find out and not been making the DA have to do subpoenas and everything else. And I totally understand it, truly I do. I spoke, and I, I, you know, the police chief is nice, and everybody is great. I, I know exactly what they're going through. But, and I know exactly how hard it is. But in my opinion, and that's why I, I came tonight, the criminal side of this is nonsense, because you're not gonna, especially in this state, match the gun to the round to the person. Because in the state of Massachusetts, any licensed person can borrow a gun from somebody else and go shoot it that day. So you will have no idea whose gun was at the range on that day being shot, because they don't keep track of that, and nobody cares. So you're not gonna match, and no one's gonna hand you a gun to test. So you're not gonna match the gun to a round, so you're gonna have the same conclusion you had that they had on my house. Okay? And, and that's the way it's gonna go. And I know this. And that doesn't, that's not what bothers me. It's, it's the public safety issue that's the issue, not, not the criminal side, right? No one reimbursed me for the damage to my house or for the hassle of paying people to have to treat my kids and everything else that we, that we had to do. And that's not the important part. From day one, I said this, and you can ask Sergeant Mann from day one, okay? It's the public safety. That's what we have to be concerned with. It should not happen. That's it.
I can say that we all agree about the safety of your neighborhoods. Like, that's never been in question, right? The reason I scheduled for all of you to attend tonight was specifically to listen to you as close as possible to what happened, right? I don't want this to drag out. None of the board members want this to drag out. Yes.
Thank you all.
There's nothing I can say that's-
No, there isn't. And, but I wanna say thank you, because you took the time to hear us out and to make your call.
We thank you, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Sajak.
Dave. Keith Sajak, 143. No, I think we all collectively just lasted. No one's trying to take away their rights to use their guns. Enjoy their private club, enjoy their private land, right? We wanna enjoy our private land. We wanna be able to go outside, enjoy our land, while they're enjoying their land. We want this, this board to really get in front of Granby. I think if you both partner up and put the pressure on that club to see how they're running that club, that's what we need. We don't have time, like everyone's been saying, to wait. It doesn't matter if it's one bullet, two bullets, four bullets, or 20 bullets. It's gonna take one bullet. We need you guys to really, we can't wait for the police. We can't wait three months for it to come back and say, we don't have. We need someone to go to that, that board meeting, and those two clubs, those two boards to get together. There's more power there. They have a right to, they have a right to practice their gun, you know, their safety protocols out there that they're doing, to obviously practice their score. But at the same time, they need to keep those bullets in their property. Those bullets should never leave their property. That's the concern here. And if you read their mission statement on their, they do not mention safety. They mention their enthusiasm, their score, but where's their safety concern?
That's what I was trying to get at earlier, when I was asking, like, what's the limits of their property, you know?
They need to stay in those limits.
Mr. Sajak.
Jeff Sajak, 143, Mountain View. I, I think the other piece, again, here, what we would ask, right? We know there's an ongoing investigation. I guess what I would wanna make sure is that in that ongoing investigation, when it starts to wrap up and things start to come out of it, that it's not just being looked at specifically at, can we place this bullet, similar to what was said before, can we place this bullet to this gun at this club at this time? You're probably not gonna be able to do that, right, for the reasons that was just, just mentioned. So I'm hoping that the investigation or what's being looked at here is what are the options and possibilities that coming at it from a safety angle, the Board of Health angle, the building inspector angle, different things like that, and not just the, you know, the bullet and the gun, and here's the forensics. And again, that has to get done, and I want it to get done, because should at least give us some type of, was it possible, the type of bullet, the distance it came at, the angle that came into my shed, you know, was it even possible? And then it's more looking at, you're not trying to track down the gun itself, or, you know, did the bullet definitively come from the club? But it's more around the, was it even possible, and looking at it from a pure safety perspective. So that's all I'm asking as part of the investigation. That's not just about the, the matching the bullet back to the dime.
Placing blame on any of those.
Placing blames, placing, right, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
I thought I saw one more hand up. No, maybe not.
Well, I, I guess I just have one question. So is that something that you can say you can do, is demand this safety audit? Is that something that you can go to Granby tonight, tomorrow, and demand a safety audit? Is that something that you can say?
We can't say anything tonight.
Can you let us know when you decide? How, or how do we find out what your decision was to our requests?
I guess that's what we're looking for, is some ray of hope that the things we've presented tonight, we have faith in that you care and those things. But how do we get informed that that next step has been taken, pushing the investigation aside and knowing that these safety measures are being evaluated? How do we know that?
I do think that's a fair question.
Yeah, I think I have majority of their email addresses. I, I read all of your emails. Anything you've sent to the select board, I also see.
Okay. So would we be able to at least be updated if we're able to move forward with a safety audit push on the gun range? Is that something that you can update us on?
What I would like to do is discuss this with council, vet the idea. We, I am in communications with the town of Granby. We can work some of this stuff out, maybe schedule another, either a public meeting with, with this group, or at least get some information out through the email chain, one way or the other.
I would like to improve the communication. I just don't know what that looks like, to be perfectly candid with you. But there is a desire on my part, and I'm certain on the rest of the board's part, to improve what can we say, right?
And we appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am.
So Michelle, 10-17, Overlook. So I think at the heart of the problem is we have no idea what process there is available, what process could be put in place. And so that's what's making it seem very unsteady and not moving forward. And so if there was even some process that could become more transparent, it, it would help us understand how things are moving, or if they're not. But what, what can be transparent? In this case, it seems like, it should be very transparent, because it's public safety. Like, how to make this transparent so that-
Steve.
We're buying into everything that you're sort of pushing ahead, but we don't know what you're pushing ahead. That's the problem.
Steve, what I wanna ask is, can you bring back to council everything that was said tonight and get a recommendation on process that we can then share with the group?
Well, I am gonna bring this conversation to council's attention and some of the suggestions that were brought up. I don't know how much can go back to the group and become public information and how much you-
I get, okay.
It's, it's unfortunate that we run into these situations as public officials. It happens during a lot of investigations. And the idea of having a private investigation ongoing at the same time as a criminal investigation, there could be conflicts there. So there's a lot of things that we need to work out. I'm not opposed to the idea. I think it's probably a good idea. I just don't know how that works out.
And I'm not meaning to put you in the hot seat. It's just-
We're going to have to put you in the hot seat.
So there's, there's a lot that we need to, to work out.
Yes.
What I can tell you is that the information that's being disseminated is coming from the DA's office. The press release came from the district attorney's office. They are in charge of the public information of the criminal investigation. Beyond that, you know, we are very limited in what we can say. It may seem obvious or odd to you, that would've been the better word, because you're all very in tune with what's going on up there, and you know a lot of facts. That doesn't mean we can talk about them. I'm sorry. You know, that's just unfortunately the way it is.
Here's from their website, that the Granby Select Board meets every Monday night at 5:30 PM at 10B West State Street at the Senior Center. So we meet every other week. They will be meeting next Monday, and I can't find an upcoming meeting, but they're, all their other meetings have been every Monday night.
Yeah, I think people have attended. And one of the things that bothered me the most is that that there was a statement made by the Granby Board of Health that we didn't care, or didn't feel that this was important. I personally care enough and feel this is important enough that I'm not gonna make any missteps. I think that's what's more important, because if we do, we may start from square one. And we need to try to make sure we get this done correctly.
You brought up the Granby Board of Health, and I'm gonna just say something. I spoke with them when it happened to my house. And what they said to me is they wouldn't move at all until they were pushed and contacted and directed by the Belchert Town Board of Health. So just to make you aware, that's what they said to me last year.
Yes.
Okay? And I understand how they're all, they have their, their series of problems. They sued, they lost, and they lost for good reason, because they didn't do the lawsuit right. I read that right away when I read what went on. But that doesn't change the safety factor of rounds leaving Granby and coming into Belchert Town. And based on how our house is off, and where Granby ends, and we begin, it only can come from that area. It doesn't come from anywhere else.
Yes, ma'am.
Services of that area are blessed.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is just a follow-up to something Mr. Williams had said. You all sort of alluded to the fact that two investigations can't go on at the same time. One is this criminal investigation. It, sometimes it all comes down to semantics and how things are worded. Why can't there be a public safety investigation? Has nothing to do with this criminal investigation whatsoever, but some sort of, like, like if that's the right nomenclature to use, let's use something, some different nomenclature, so that it's not overlapping this, this big process that you say has already, it's off and running, it's on the train tracks and going. And we would not wanna interfere with that. But can't we walk and chew gum at the same time? And do two types of investigations? Because it is the safety that we're more concerned about that's going to give us some result. Again, the criminal investigation is probably not going to result in our safety.
Yeah. I think what I'm trying to point out is that I need to, I need to be able to answer that before the select board can make a decision.
Yeah, I don't, I don't say what. I don't think we have to do them at the same time, but we can't allow the gun range to become operational again until the safety audit is complete. So if it takes time to get to that point where we can have an independent third-party audit, fine, like do whatever is right and the right process, but we can't just have it reopen and have sniper craft events taking place while this is all going on.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I, we wanted to give you time to deliberate, so that you can make a decision as a body about what you're gonna do to proceed. But what, if there's anything that we can do to support you, if you have to go to a Board of Health meeting in Granby as a group, we don't know what the rules of that are. But if there's something like that, we'll kinda show up. It matters more when it comes from your mouth than ours so far, 'cause we don't get through, we don't get even voicemails. So that's what we're, you know, if, if you find that we don't, you don't have a whole lot of stuff that you can do, then, you know, email us, and we will show up at that Granby meeting, if that's what you gotta do. But that's what we're looking for in terms of an answer of what are you willing to do to help us?
I think we have to listen to council. And that, I wish that there was more. But to Steve's point, we don't wanna make any missteps. We've probably said more than we should've. But that's out of it deep. But that's out of a deep feeling of despair at what you're going through. Just know we're we're on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. KP Law, I'm KP Law.
We call the public hearing open on the industrial road.
Oh, jeez.
In accordance with provisions of General Law Chapter twenty two, twenty three, the Select Board of the Town of Belchadown intends to lay out as a townway a certain street in Belchadown, Massachusetts identified as industrial road all adhered to the inhabitants of the town of Belchadown. A street acceptance plan industrial road dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty four appeared by Sherman and Figg Land Surveying and Engineering. This plan is available for inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk Lawrence Memorial Hall, Belchadown, Massachusetts. You are invited to attend a public hearing to be held by the Select Board in the Select Board Meeting Room on the first floor of Lawrence Memorial Hall to Davis Street, Belchadown on Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four at seven oh three PM. The Select Board will determine the boundaries and measurements of your ways, file the same in the Office of the Town Clerk and submit the resulting wayouts for acceptance at the next town meeting scheduled for May thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Steve, can you briefly synthesize this one?
Sure. This is the roadway that was constructed in the Carriage Grove Development Area in the old former state school campus. It's the short cul-de-sac, three hundred foot cul-de-sac that runs south off of Carriage Drive. The EDAC and Mass Development funded this project. It's complete and it's ready to be accepted. Once it's it's accepted, it will not only be part of our road inventory for chapter ninety funds, but it'll also be part of, or to be eligible for road frontage. So they can start to separate lots and sell them, building lots.
Very good. See, that was a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on the industrial road discussion? Is there anybody online that would like to comment? Any comments, Linda? Are you good?
Um, yeah, I'm good. I worked recently with Mass Development representatives. We've got all the documents that we need. This is a relatively new road.
Yeah, this one's only a year old.
Short study, but it's all it's all good. So no, and the frontage piece of it is is important to then look to future development of that area.
Okay, uh, going once, going twice, uh, three times, the public hearing is now closed as it relates to industrial road. If you'd like to go ahead.
We'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then can you make a motion to accept industrial road?
Okay, I forgot how to word it. I'm sorry. I will move that the Select Board recommended a town meeting to approve laying out a townway in public hearing on industrial road on the original state school property.
Works for me.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Review and approve additional warrant articles for annual town meeting.
So we have two warrant articles to add to the the list. One of one is bylaw revisions that reflect the authority of the town manager position. It essentially will disband the personnel board. They will no longer have a a purpose and it's in alignment with the legislation. The legislation supersedes the bylaw, so this just cleans it up so that there's no question. So we're going to add that in and we also have the the capital list of town projects. Both articles are still in draft form. There may be another change to the bylaw that's necessary. Town council notified us today that the section about military leave, military leave regulations on the federal level are very fluid. They change quite often. And the recommendation is that we eliminate that section and we just state that military leave will be administered in accordance with federal law, federal and state law. The capital plan, the police chief notified me today that he may be eligible for a grant for the the fingerprinting machine, which is a replacement. And if that's the case, then that money will be freed up and we'll reallocate it to another item. Regardless, both of those articles need to be on the town meeting warrant and we will finalize them as we get closer.
Okay. Any motion or do you think us to approve it? What do you need tonight?
Uh, if you could just vote to approve it, then.
My question is quick. So in reading the personnel committee, it it I read a director is going to be in the place. Who is this this director?
Okay, so the the document was reflected, just call it the Personnel Director. In the, I think, second paragraph of the document, it says Personnel Director shall be, or the town man- uh, town manager shall be the Personnel Director.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. See, this is probably silly, but generally when you put a warrant article before us for approval, we have the language of the article. Is that just not prepared yet?
Correct.
To see if the town will, there's none of that here, so I was just confused.
Right, that's going to be the next select board meeting. We'll have the final warrant with all of the articles.
Okay.
And you'll have that. So this is just to let you know that it's
Coming.
Down the line, it's coming.
Yeah, yeah. And I just want to point out that I've been working with the chair on on the personnel bylaw. So that's why it's coming in the way in the form it is. We wanted to get it on the books.
Doesn't make sense to wait another entire year to wrap up that.
No, no, it could have been done before, I suspect, but let's do it now and get it done.
Very good.
Okay, so you don't need anything on this.
No, Steve would like us to vote.
He would like us to vote?
Yes, on the approving the additional articles. We'll do the final review next week, but he just wants her to go ahead tonight.
I will make a motion that we approve the two additional articles that town meeting warrant pending our approval on at the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. Final language approved.
I don't see where it says what you're saying and I want to I want to see that. I'm looking at page fifty two or fifty three.
It's under section ninety one, three.
What page is that?
Ninety one page.
I I oh ninety one, I'm I have ninety one.
We're at the top of fifty three.
Ninety three.
Ninety one, three, like the top of page fifty.
Yeah, so it's not the second paragraph. I'm sorry, it's a Did you find ninety one, three?
Shall act as a personnel director. I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Final review and vote to Doris to war for special town meeting.
So this is where you get your, the questions are in form. And this is for the special. So again, in in two weeks, we'll have the same document for the annual.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we approve the warrant for the special town meeting, uh, May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, as presented.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Endorsment of the release of easement for Sheffield Drive. Is this is this going the other way?
Yeah, we're going to release it. It's it's not necessary. So about a year ago, while I was still at the Department of Public Works, the property owner contacted me about the easement that was put in place originally for drainage. The drainage was never put in. It's 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 not necessary. There was never even a design to go on the subdivision for drainage to be put in there. It was just an easement. And after having the Department of Public Works look at it, we all agree that it's not necessary. So the landowner would like to clear up the title because it it prohibits, you know, it what it does is reduces the size of the building envelope. And they would like to potentially build or sell. So after reviewing it and agreeing that it's not necessary, I had the property owners attorneys prepare a draft easement, release of easement document. It has been reviewed by KP Law. Town council has reviewed it and made some edits and it's ready to go. So it needs to be signed and notarized. And we have a notary here. Mr. Blodett is here and he will happily notarize it for us so we can get it back to the landowner and they can record it.
Works for me.
Um, all right, so I will make a motion that we approve the release of easement for Sheffield Drive as presented.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
How many people need to sign that? Is that right there?
Uh, it's about everybody on here. Nope, that's sorry.
As long as the majority of the board signs it, it'll be okay.
Um, it has everybody.
Is that all?
Yeah. But it only need one signature notarized. I wish they'd be said that would be yours.
That's the way we've been doing it. Oh, my fees went up. It's a hundred dollars.
Send us the bill.
Cash. And I'll take checks.
Okay, but do you can notarize leases? Okay, so they'll pummel this down. Just so you know.
Okay, item G, special permit Frederick Lee, nine forty four Federal Street. What do you got here, Steve?
So Mr. Lee owns property on Route nine up by Dwight Cemetery. And he also is a collector of antique vehicles and restoration of antique vehicles. Years ago, he requested a special permit to to be able to operate that from the Select Board. And it's up for renewal. We haven't had any concerns or any complaints or incidents. He he doesn't have any neighbors. So I'm recommending that the board just go ahead and approve it and we'll let him know.
Very good.
I just have one question. Steve, this special permit or the special permit, it it limits him to the seven vehicles, right?
Correct.
We're not, we're not just giving him free rein.
Right.
I would just say he's at the end of our road. The property's always well maintained and lovely. I just wanted to be sure we weren't like giving a real broad stroke approval.
Yeah, yeah, no, he he has reminded.
Uh, then I will make a motion that we approve the three year extension for the special permit for Mr. Lee at Okay, where is it? So this is for us. Nine forty four, thank you, Federal Street.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good. I'll tell you what, um, under item six, are there, is there one or two items that, uh, board members would like an update from Manager Williams on? That's supposed to have him go through everything.
I will hear about one of them in executive session. Uh, this, are you allowed to talk about the severance agreement to dispatchers union or is that in executive session?
That's executive session. Can I pick a couple quickly? Of course.
Yeah, whatever you say.
Website launch, we're still expecting by the end of July. Uh, excuse me, yes, end of July. We are, uh, excuse me, end of June. We are hoping to have a soft start beginning of June to get it out to the public. We're hoping to get it to the employees on May fourteenth and start training, so it's it's coming fast. That's the update there. The Energy Choice Program, there's been a postcard that's been mailed to our residents. There's a meeting next week, the twenty fourth, at six o'clock in this building to talk more about this. So I just wanted to make sure the board is aware, but that's coming up. We have a resident that's extremely concerned about the April fourth ice storm. She's in attendance tonight and we're going to be working on a time.
Is that you, Ms. Dutton?
Yeah, we're going to be working on a time for her to come in front of the board and talk about the incident and ways that the town can.
Thought that was on our next agenda.
It was on for the twenty ninth, but there may be a scheduling conflict, so I'm working with Mrs. Dutton to work, um, find a better time.
Okay.
I don't know how you feel about this, Steve, but she's here. We actually had a schedule in my mind.
I don't have the either chief with me and I think they need to be part of it because we're looking at some other stuff. But what I can tell the board quickly is that we had a a road that was closed due to down trees and power lines. And it remained closed for about sixty, uh, thirty six hours.
Unacceptable.
It was a dead end street and unfortunately, you know, first and foremost, the biggest failure here was National Grid. To be quite frank, I think there was just a lot of lip service. They kept saying that the road, you know, the power would be back up in four hours. And instead of taking action to clear the roadway and and allow for residents to access their homes or get out of their homes, they were non-responsive in that that manner. And I think that needs to be addressed first. And then I think we also need to bring the both chiefs in and discuss how we can better respond to those kinds of situations. It's hard to determine what decisions would have been made if they had initially said it's going to be thirty six hours before the roads open. I think there's reliance on what National Grid says. Even the homeowners, you know, have reliance on that. So we need to work with them too. But I I would like to schedule this when I can get the both chiefs here and have a more robust conversation. If that's okay with you, Mrs. Dutton.
I mean, it it does work for me, absolutely. I just wanted to take like the briefest of moment
Of course.
to just let you know that, uh, and since I, Steve and I have known each other forever, like us have met now. It was scary for other residents. So I have a loud voice, I have good platform, but the people who are spiting emotions for don't. Don't. And so we have the ice storm and literally four days later, the ambulance is a very frequent visitor to the end of that cul-de-sac and it was needed again. And had it been needed during that thirty six hours, someone could have bled out. So we stopped this as a town. We don't allow this kind of subdivision with only one way here, same way out. And what I said to Steve is is we we need an actionable plan. And yes, National Grid was totally unresponsive. But also National Grid, when I got a hold of them, trudged through the woods until I could get service, they're like, well, there's one pole down. We're working on it. I said, no, there's three poles down and our road is blocked. The residents are trapped. We can't get out. Indiana Powers here, and they said they'll move the stuff, but they need you to tell them that they're going to move it because they can't touch it if you don't tell them. You you know how it is with power lines. So that happened. And I worked with Steve. He already called the fire department. It was good to know that there was a plan, which was to send six guys in through the woods with a stretcher if anybody needed them. But there was simply been no way to let them know that anybody needed them because the landlines were down and there's no self-service on that end of Ledgewood Drive and sledge. So it required like maybe door knocking, you know, we have an emergency system. I can't couldn't get an answer from anybody about whose responsibility, you know, like makes that call to send out emergency texts, calls. Now, landlines wouldn't have made a difference. But what I said to Steve is is I I myself, some other neighbors would love to be a part of, you know, something to for us to just come up with an actionable. But, um, what I said to Steve is, is I, I myself, some other neighbors, would love to be a part of, you know, something to, for us to just come up with an actionable plan. We, we know there are places, like nursing homes and other places, where there are elderly people, which, like, the average age of Ledgewood Drive is now sixty. You know, we all moved in. We are in our thirties, but we're not anymore. So, um, just to come up with an actual plan. I believe that Steve and the two chiefs will work on this. I think it involved door knocking. I really do. We know you're here. We know you're trapped. What do you need? You know, can we get you to the senior center for the day until we know more? And, and, uh, you guys are gonna have to deal with National Grid because that was just a disaster. But they're always gonna be a disaster. When you agree National Grid is always gonna be like this.
Yeah, it's part of course.
Make no reason to expect them to change.
No comment.
Right. And then that's why I said, we have no reason to expect a change. So we need to plan, you know, to say just what happens. Um, I know my neighbor down the street, they, Peg, you saw, there were no barricades stopping anybody from driving into those wires.
No.
And that was after...
I think by the time we drove through, they might have moved some of them because we, at least we were able to get onto Ledgewood Circle and...
But then you had to back up, and then you had to back up, yeah, because you couldn't get through.
The turn around, which was certainly a bad, oh, you're right. There was only one way in and one way out, but, but they at least had, I think, moved some of them. We saw some down still in driveways and in yards, but, um, the road, at least Ledgewood Circle, the wires were...
But, but I just think direction, you know, like, you don't know best here. You can't get out. You can't go through, you know, like, put up some air that would have prevented that. You know, because there was that one way, you know, and stuff, and I unders... Door knocking and that stuff, we, we have to go back to the old-fashioned way of communicating when everything electronic is down. But, um, there was no way, Steve, you're more, a little aware of what goes on. There was no way they could have spent the night in their homes. These are elderly, sick people, and they had to get out. They had to get out.
I think you're right, Steve, that we need both chiefs in the room before we have a more full discussion.
No, I, we are not looking for any answer and nor is there any bl- blaming, complaining. I told Steve I wanted to come here because I didn't wanna be, you know, angry and a bunch of finger pointing because that's not gonna be the way to do it.
Point of order is, is, are we deliberating about this tonight?
No, I think I'm just, no, I think I'm just talking to you. I think I'm just talking to you to say, I have faith that we can work together, you know, to come up with an actionable plan for the safety that's reasonable in the event, you know, systems are down and whatever. I think that we can do that. But I wanted to be here because I sent you all the letter and I, and I, you know, I knew it would mail as generally addressed to something like that. So I just wanted to be here to explain that, um...
Yep, we got it.
Thank you.
So Steve, uh, did work with the chiefs and sure be back in front of us with this issue.
Yeah, it's already been discussed and they're working on some draft language.
Okay. Very good.
You know, I, I think we just have a lot going on right now with town meeting coming up and...
We do.
So we will get there.
Is it helpful at all for the residents to contact? Because I think not, but tell me if I'm wrong. Is it helpful for the residents to contact the, uh, the State Department of Public Utilities, you know, to complain about actual...
You know, um, rather than give you direction or any sort of thing, it'd be misconstrued as deliberation tonight. I think best probably just stop here, if that's okay.
Okay, that's fine. It's perfectly acceptable. I guess it was suggested that we contact them and I just think it's...
Very good. Steve's a great resource for that. He gives absolute point everyone in the right direction.
Thanks.
Okay. Who else? Anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, I just wanna briefly mention Sports Haven, and the reason is I need to do a shout-out to Congressman Richard Neal and, um, Edward Markey. Sports Haven project, we are on the verge of going out to bid. On April third, we received notice from, um, Richard Neal's office that we received another nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of federal funds to complete that project.
Fantastic.
That puts us at a hundred percent funding.
Alright.
So when we go out to bid...
Do you know that you, that you were gonna get that or...
Um, we have been waiting for almost eighteen months.
Wow.
Town Administrator Brom worked with the Sports Haven people to get that started and, um, we've been watching it very closely and advocating when we can, and, um, you know, we found out in the beginning of April that the money was available. Um, so now we're just waiting for the paperwork to come through. But, so when we go out to bid, um, and we're hoping that, um, by the end of June, we'll have a, a bid opening and we'll be able to award a contract shortly thereafter. Um, but the good news is we now have a hundred percent funding.
Fantastic.
So that is great news.
We've gone out to bid for so many things, so this is, this will finish the project, that people will be in your homes and everything will be...
I hope so.
They will own the property and they will be in charge and they waited a really long time for this. And they've had a huge amount of help from the town with all of these grants, but it has taken a lot of time.
So, uh, you know, other than, unless you have questions on number six, um, I can skip the rest of it. It's all pretty redundant.
I don't have any questions on six, not tonight?
No.
Um...
Oh, I do have one.
Sure.
Um, pathfinders?
Um, the work at the fire station's been, uh, progressing steadily and it looks really good. Um, I took that opportunity to talk to the superintendent about the budgets.
Good.
Um, although, uh, while they reported a four-point eight percent increase in their budget, and that is accurate, um, the pass-through to the towns was only two-point six percent. Um, the remainder of our increase was from the additional ten students.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, we, we talked about that at the, at the finance committee meeting, um, and that's... What I was told is they made the difference up through grants. I just hope that next year, those grants remain and that they're not gonna be looking for that full four or five percent increase 'cause then, you know, we're gonna have some, some issues, so.
Thank you.
Anything on seven you want to talk about?
Number seven. Maybe six and seven.
No, no, there's nothing that I have to, unless you have questions.
Any forward motion on any of that, or on seven?
Um...
If not, then we can just...
Yeah, I've been...
The DLS audit.
I need to reach back out to them now that they're complete with the forecasting and find out when that next phase is gonna start. I have not done that yet. Um, as you can see from all the activity in number six, it was a pretty busy couple of weeks.
Right, right.
Um, actually, Steve, just to, just to Lisa's point, right, that DLS audit is clearly in the strategic wheelhouse. We get that. And, um, I'd just like to also, uh, let the board know, um, I don't think Steve's had a chance to breathe in over a month about everything else that's been going on. So like, I'm aware and it's something that I'm sure the board is, knows that, like, you know, I'm a huge proponent for. It's not off the radar screen, but like, it definitely, uh, it definitely had to, like, just take a second to percolate. But now that the forecasting tool is done for this season, it's time for that next phase. And we'll probably pick it up right after town meeting, that piece of it.
Yeah.
That's fair.
I, I am gonna shoot an email off to get it on their radar. Um, so the land transfer for parcel D is off the table for this year. Um, in order to transfer the land, it has to go to town meeting, and there's not enough time to prepare all that documentation. Um, what I would, what I am proposing as an alternative is that, um, the Select Board grant the EDIC a perpetual easement to the ten acres that they're looking to have transferred, and then we can transfer it later. This way it'll, they'll have legal rights to it, which is what they need, um, in order to design a subdivision road into that property is legal rights. And the Select Board can grant an easement without town meeting approval. So that's how we're probably gonna have to handle that one. Um, the capital planning's done. Let's see. Um, we have the warrant and ballot articles for the special town meeting for the Javishbrook Middle School Reconstruction Project. So been working with a town clerk to finalize that process. Um, master plan, I didn't get, um, Doug Albertson was not available for a discussion on that, and Jen's not here, so we'll have to wait on that. Um, I already talked about the website, so that's, that's really it. Those are the highlights.
Very good.
I don't know if, uh, you'll tell me, uh, this is the place, but, um, uh, the Javishbrook Minutes. Um, I'm gonna paraphrase. It said that, um, the final number for what the taxpayer would pay would not be, would, may not be available for the mail-in vote. But the question then is, okay, well, will it be ready for town meeting vote?
Yes. So there's been a lot of discussion about the final number, and what we know right now is the project is estimated between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. There's a thirty-six to thirty-nine percent range for reimbursement from the MSBA program, which puts the town, um, liable for seventy-four to seventy-eight million dollars. Um, the final number is due by the end of April. And when we say due, it'll be submitted to the MSBA program for their final review. It could be upwards to a couple of weeks before they finalize that review and, and actually approve that final number and the reimbursement rate, which will give us the town liability. Um, it's unlikely that we'll have enough time for the printing of the ballots. But that's a moot point because the DLS and, um, Mass General Law do not allow for a debt exclusion article on an election to have the number in it.
To not have the number in it?
Correct.
Okay.
Wait, wait, they don't allow it to have the number or they don't allow not to have the number?
It, you, you do not put the number on the debt exclusion.
Interesting.
So, a, a towns person will not know how much they are increasing their taxes.
Correct.
Well...
When they vote on it.
The information will be avail, it won't be on the ballot.
Right.
So it'll be all over the town website. I'm sure it'll be, it, it will be available, just not on the ballot.
So I'm, I'm glad you pointed it out because I went, I spent a lot of time on town council talking about this very issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we looked at not only the, the general law requirements, but the DLS, um, templates that are used for these kinds of things. And I find it very disturbing that when you're borrowing upwards to eighty million dollars, you do not put that on a ballot. But that's the way it works, and what I'm afraid of is people are gonna think that we are purposefully trying to deceive them to get a yes vote. Um, so we do need to make sure that the schools are doing everything they can to, um, make sure the public is aware of the project cost before they go to the polls.
I think it's important that there is a communication plan or strategy that lets Belchertown residents know bottom line what they're going, what the increase to their taxes are going to be.
So the good news is the town meeting warrant will have the number. That is also a requirement. So if, and this wasn't done for any other reason than scheduling conflicts, but if we had the election after the town meeting, then it, it would probably reach other people.
Make more sense. I understand from our school committee that the State Ethics Commission has told them they are not permitted to be interviewed or make public statements about this, so they have not until, in, until, well, until tonight. It has been in a position to share this information, including tax information and whatnot. And they have now something called a yes committee, which in theory will be available for interviews and whatnot, but we have not, there has been no communication from them that I'm aware of to start getting the information out there. And we are seven weeks from a ballot vote to, I mean, it just makes no sense to me at all. And that we're not serving the community by not sharing this information as soon as it's available.
I feel the same way. The, um, the Javishbrook Middle School Building Committee does have a website, and everything that, um, goes on is posted on that website, but there's a lot of information there and it takes a long time to pull out what you're looking for.
I think Jen Turner talked about putting together, it's basically an adag lance.
Mm-hmm.
That sums up...
Correct.
Uh, you know, the, the main, the main salient points.
Yeah. And I...
Unless she's a part of that yes committee, I don't see how that's gonna get done.
I don't think dissemination of facts is outside of their purview.
I don't think it is either.
I, I think they, they cannot advocate for or against, but...
One way or another, exactly.
Then they could have disseminated facts months ago. This is so frustrating.
Anyway.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I understand the frustration and...
I wanted to throw rocks.
No, I mean, this, this question for new school comes up every, like, twenty, thirty years, so it's, it's not, it's not retained institutional knowledge, right? Um, but the, uh, I am aware that they do have a, um, uh, is it a yes committee? I forget exactly what they call it.
I think that's what it's called. I believe that's what it's called.
They, they are, they are brand-new and they are trying their best to get up and running as fast as possible. But, uh, to the earlier point, uh, the school committee, um, we were told they can't do anything about that, like, there's, that yes committee's sort of on their own. Doesn't make sense to me. I don't really understand that part of the process, but that's, that's what they're going with.
They may be shooting themselves in the foot. That's all I'm saying.
That is, it's a question for the townsfolk to vote on, the, as, as all major decisions. Um, I don't think, I really don't think the difference between, uh, what is it, uh, zero to three million dollar difference between the outliers is gonna change anybody's opinion, whether, either people are gonna vote for it or not. Um, it's...
But I do think they should have the number.
Absolutely.
So that they know how it's gonna directly impact.
Well, that's the number we have to work on.
Yeah.
And I believe Steve and the finance team are working on that.
Excellent.
As we speak. Even, even a range of impact, but we gotta be careful, like, you know. We have to be careful with that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
Very good. Um...
If you, um, if anybody, if you remind me, send me an email and I'll forward that DLS document to you. I'll get paid for it, 'cause I'll probably forget. I'll try to remember.
Individual board member reports. Lisa?
No, we can mail.
Oh, I thought we just covered that. Nope, alright.
How about mail?
Um, I think we've talked about everything.
We've had pretty much everyone before. So I had marked all of the Mountain View Drive, uh, mails and we, we hit that with our conversation.
Yeah, I think we've done.
And then I think that's, I think that's all except for Mrs. Dutton's letter, which we will get to at another meeting, and we did a little touch on some of those.
Okay, go to board member reports now.
Yes, yes, but you know what? I'm trying to keep track here, smarty boots.
Smarty boots?
Hey, I didn't wanna say smartass because it's not my mouth.
Alright, anyway. Okay, it's late. Um, I attended the, uh, JBMS, uh, Building Committee presentation, attended the School Department Budget Hearing, attended the meeting to discuss new pickleball court schedule, and, uh, met with the president of the Community Foundation, uh, to look at potential partnership opportunities between the Foundation and Belchertown.
Peggy?
Hello, was at the flag raising for National Child Abuse Month, which probably should be called National Anti-Child Abuse Month. That is such an odd name. Uh, was at the Bark Craft Fair on JBMS on the sixth, also the Agricultural Commission Seed Swap and Chicken Care Event on the sixth, also the McPherson Garden Work Day on the sixth. I was at the Clat Memorial Library Eclipse Viewing Party, which was so fun, and I wouldn't have missed it for anything, even though I didn't get a good picture. I attended the Lakes Committee Meeting, uh, JBMS New School Presentation, the School Budget Presentation, and the Joint Finance Committee and Select Board Final Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Budget Meeting.
Oh, I did that too.
Yeah. And there's an open house at the McPherson Garden on the eighteenth of May, starting, I think, at ten AM, if anyone's more interested.
Excellent.
And that is it for me.
Wonderful. So, um, thank you for doing all that. Um, my, my days consist of almost daily chats with Manager Williams because there's just so much stuff going on, right? Um, and I'd like to thank Steve for, not only his dedication, but, you know, really getting, uh, uh, the entire team, right? It's, um, I really appreciate the entire team, uh, putting their heads down and getting all this work done to get ready for town meeting coming up, right?
Absolutely.
And, um, specifically, the, uh, the final budget presentation last week, right? Uh, this is a particularly tough budget year specifically. Um, uh, this board, uh, Steve and the School Department, uh, I think we all worked together exceptionally well to, to keep the line, right? Um, the financial line, I should say. Uh, we've heard from a number of parents and students and, um, you know, I just want everyone to understand that nobody is happy about the situation we're in at all, uh, budgetary-wise. Um, it's, it's more or less a reflection of the times that we're in. It's been, it's been about five years overdue to have this sort of serious type of discussion. And, um, we had it, and, um, it's, it's a place to build strength from going, uh, on into next year and subsequent years. it's, it's a place to build strength from going, uh, into next year and subsequent years. So, um, I'd just like to say thank you for the board members for all, um, your input, your questions, uh, your tough questions of town manager Williams, uh, the school committee, and I think we got to, um, a place where we can build from for this budget season.
And the finance committee.
And the finance committee, yes, uh, the finance committee as well, uh, sorry about that, finance committee. Um, very good, alright, let's see here, questions from the press? No questions from the, alright, so now we go into, uh.
So, I will make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One, Subsection Two, Non-Union Collected Bargaining, Subsection Three, Union Collected Bargaining, and Subsection Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate.
Uh, second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh.
Say aye.
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 Tired.
That's a eight-twenty-one. Thank you, everybody?
Let's see, everyone signed?
This conference is no longer being written.